Welcome everyone. For those that don't know me, and I know and recognise a lot of you online, I'm Nicholas Rushden, I'm the leader of the county council. I've been the leader for ten and a half years-ish now. With me today to help, I've got Deborah Taylor, who's the deputy leader, Chris Tambini, who's our chief financial officer, and we've also got Lee Brecken, who handles the finances for the group. As you guys probably know, we're a Conservative-led county council. I appreciate we've got a good mixture of people on the on the call today, but I thank you all for attending. It's useful to touch base with you, it's useful to speak with you, and it's useful to explain our financial predicament to you. So thanks very much for attending. Apparently this is going on social media later, so if you, all you guys can remember that. When I say guys, I mean ladies as well, so if you can all remember that. I'm online from home, so I might not be able to see the hands up, because I've got someone to prompt me if there's any hands up. So the normal protocols apply for asking questions. Use the little yellow hand. If you can all keep your microphones off when you're not speaking and on when you are speaking, that'll help the free free flow of the meeting. But it is an informal meeting. We're here as, we're here as friends, we're all in in public service. We're not with any points to score, we just want to explain to you where we are. Having said that, I'm going to hand over to Deborah now, who's going to give you a brief outline of where we see the national financial position. Then I think Deborah's going to hand over to Lee Brecken, the finance portfolio holder. And then after that, we're going to have some detailed information from Chris Tambini, who is the director of corporate finance. So apart from Chris, who's a civil servant, an officer of the county council, all the rest of us are politicians. So you can shout at me if you want, you can shout at Deborah, but we can't shout or moan at Chris. Chris is just going to set it out straight back, exactly as it is. So can I hand over to you, Deborah, for the background to the national stuff?
Thank you, leader, and good afternoon to everyone, and a happy new year to you all, if I haven't wished you that already. So just a little bit about the national climate where we find ourselves in. So I'm sure you're aware that the the current financial climate is worse than ever, and probably far worse than it was for the austerity years that we've been through for the last 10 years or so. So we decided to go to the public early on the scale of the challenge we faced, and I think lots of other local authorities have also followed suit. But obviously for for us particularly, our problems are far worse, given that we're the lowest funded county in the UK, which is really difficult for us to to cut anything from the bone. We're right down to the cutting into the bone now. So the national finances are not looking in great shape. The Bank of England are warning of the longest recession since records began. The war in Ukraine is having a huge impact on us, and also the cost of living increases really affects the council as well, it does, that everyone else in their own households. So the government's also facing lots of financial challenges, and local government finance is probably quite low down on the government priority list for support, even though we will continue to do what we can to to raise the plight of us being the lowest funded county council. So the government will have to do enough to ensure that not too many authorities fall over. I think we're starting to see the beginning of that, and probably will get a lot worse during the year. But we're in a better position than a lot of local authorities, so we're not on the brink of collapse at all. So we are managing our budgets first, and that's through what we've done over the last few years, is to make sure that we keep a really close eye on our finances, and that's why we've decided to go early. Do all these webinars with different community groups and yourselves in the, out there in the local authority area, just to make sure that we take on board what your thoughts are, any suggestions that you may have. But we all need to work together to get through these next couple of years that are going to be really difficult. So I'll now hand over to Lee Brecken, who's going to give you a little bit more indication of our local position here.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Just on the local position, our provisional settlement for this year has helped us close the gap for next year, and has allowed us to find a way to balance our budget. But we've still got a gap of 17 million going into 2425, and that rises to 92 million by 2627. I'm sure Chris will give you the details of that later. Our inflationary cost pressures are significant, which is a lot of the problems that we've had to face as an authority. Inflation is expected to add another 20 to 30 million per year to our costs as we go forward. And service demand is unrelenting, and we've still seen significant growth, especially in those services for our most vulnerable. We do have a good track record of being able to make revenue savings. We've done over 250 million pounds worth of savings off our revenue costs since 2010, and we will continue to pursue ways to make operations and services more efficient. We do have to look at everything. It's a very challenging time for members. As I say, we didn't come into politics or local government for this. But of course, we are conscious as well, it comes at the time when people are already struggling to make ends meet. So I think with that short overview, I'll now hand over to Chris Tambini.
Thanks, Lee. Thanks, thanks, Deborah. So this slide kind of sets out some of the headlines that were around kind of before Christmas. They're both national headlines and and local headlines. Sets out kind of what it means for the County Council. What I would say is that our position is pretty similar to lots of other upper-tier local authorities. We've got similar pressures. Our Achilles' heel is, what Deborah said, is our low funding position. So our starting position is very, is very difficult. You know, we've already done a number of service reductions over the last decade or so. We've got no universal youth service. We've got a significant number of our libraries already community-run. We've got very tight care packages. So our baseline starting position does give us a particularly kind of difficult position over the next kind of two to four years. Go to the next slide, please. This slide kind of sets out some of the headline figures, and a lot of these are going to be picked up in terms of later slides. One thing I will mention is council tax. So the budget proposal we took to Cabinet before Christmas had a 5% increase in council tax for 2324, and thereafter it was reduced down to 2% for the following three years. That is actually pretty similar to a lot of other county councils. I think most people are going for 5%, just reflecting the pressures that we, that we're all under. The other thing I'll mention is that we've, we've kind of gone public with a 250 reduction in posts. Just to point out, we don't think we're going to have that much in the way of compulsory redundancies. We think we can be able to deal with that through kind of natural kind of oasis over the years and vacancies, et cetera. So although it is, it is a reduction in posts, we think we can deal with it in a, in a reasonable fashion. Next slide, please. Right, well, our issue, like most councils, is really around inflation. We've, if you look past over the last decade, our issue was really around demand with a fairly benign kind of inflationary pressures. Now we've got rising demand and we've got inflation. So the graph on the left kind of shows since 2004 what's happened in terms of inflation. You can see that big spike starting kind of last, last year. It is forecast to have peaked and it's forecast to reduce down. The issue with forecasts is most, most of them are generally, generally inaccurate. So some people are thinking it will kind of level out at 4% maybe over the medium term, and others think it might go negative kind of next year. We'll have to kind of wait and see in terms of what, what happens in practice. In terms of what that means for our overall budgetary position, you can see the, the slide on the right. Our key source of income is council tax, and even when you've got a 5% increase in council tax, and an increase is 2% thereafter, you can see there's a big gap between that and what the prevailing rate of inflation is, which is 10%. So that gives us a, a big issue in terms of addressing and sorting out our kind of budget gaps. So that's our fundamental pressure. But I expect that's the same pressure that district councils are feeling at the same time anyway. Go to the next slide, please. So this kind of sets that out in a, in a bit more detail. So you can kind of see that the key elements of inflation for the county council are pay awards, national living wage. And by national living wage, that's predominantly on external social care contracts and contract inflation. You add those three up altogether, you get to 31 million of emergency, emerging inflationary pressures for 2324, which clearly is a significant figure. And on top of that, as I mentioned before, we've got service demands principally around social care, both adult and children's social care of 17 million pounds. So clearly some big pressures on the budget. And as I said, you know, if you look back over the last 10 years, we had the service demand pressure, but not the inflationary pressure on top, which, which clearly kind of puts us in a, in a much tougher position. Like this slide is a little bit more complicated, so I'll try and explain it. So the top line on the, on the table is the MTFS gap, as in the current MTFS. So you can kind of see, we were predicting this time last year that we'd have a gap of about 8 million pounds for 2324, increasing to 40 million pounds by the time we get to 2627. Clearly, a lot of things have changed since then. The, the good news is for 2324, and you look at all the various changes, the additional savings we put in there, we can balance the MTFS for next year. But that is based on 19 million pounds worth of savings within the MTFS, you know, a significant challenge to deliver that level of savings for, for next year. Thereafter, you can see the, the gap increasing. So you look at 2425, the starting point was a 24 million pounds gap. Again, additional savings, et cetera, reduce that down to 17 million, which means that the total savings incorporated into the MTFS for 2425 is 36 million. So again, you know, a, a significant kind of a challenge to achieve that level of savings. And as time goes out, over the next kind of three or four years, you can see that kind of gap increasing and the savings requirement increasing. In fact, the total challenge by the time we get to 2627 is 155 million. We've never had that level of challenge. So that will be the required savings we need to make by the time we get to that year, if our assumptions around various things such as government funding turn out to be true. So a significant challenge over the medium term. I, I think most people on this call will be kind of fully aware that when the government announced their autumn statement, although there's a certain amount of kind of pressure within the next two years, the can was to, to a certain extent, kind of kicked down the road with the big kind of pressure on, on addressing the shortfall in public finances pushed out to years three and four. And that's why you can see those very big kind of saving, budget gaps opening up in those later years. Go to the next slide. So what, what this shows is the actual savings we've identified in the MTFS and how they're split between efficiency savings and service reductions. And you can kind of see that, actually, there's a pretty small amount, 7%, 4.2 million of service reductions. By far, the great majority of savings is going to come through efficiencies. And you can see at the bottom of that slide where the, where the key area of proposed service reduction will be. So those kind of sub-bullet points starting from shy grants, working their way down to health improvement services. That's where the savings are. But I would stress that they are, you know, a very small minority in terms of the total savings we've got to achieve. Next slide. So in, in terms of the, the criteria that, that members generally do in terms of making decisions on service reductions, they're, they're all kind of listed down there. I mean, the, the two that I'd stress, which has been a kind of key focus of the administration over recent years, is really protecting vulnerable people. So the impact on vulnerable individuals of some of these savings is one of the key criteria. The other thing I'll point out is consultation feedback. So there's a consultation on the, on the budget, you know, the process we're going through now. But when we come to some of those other savings, they will go through the usual process, which is going to be a report to Cabinet to kickstart the consultation, proper consultation with the, those groups impacted by those savings, generally kind of residents and various different services or groups. The, the results of that consultation will come back to Cabinet, and then a decision will be made on those savings. So there's, although we've kind of set out the high-level strategic approach to the budget, there's clearly a lot of detailed work that will need to take place over the coming months. And a lot of that will take place kind of spring and summer, kind of next year. Go to the next slide. This, this slide shows, shows two things. So it shows the, the budget in, in 2223, and it shows how that compares to what the forecast budget will be in 2627. And it looks at that both through expenditure and, and income. And I think that the, the key things that jump out from this, although we've talked a lot about savings so far in this presentation, actually, the overall county council budget will grow. So the budget this year is around a kind of 504 million, and we expect that to grow to 627. And really, that, that is to do with inflationary pressure we've got, we've got to address, and also that growth in demand. So despite those savings, we think the, the overall budget will, will increase. And what you can see by looking at the expenditure side, you'll see that there's been a fairly kind of big increase in terms of adult, adult social care and children's social care kind of expenditure. So they're accounting for an increase in proportion of the overall county council's budget, just to do with the demands principally around kind of demographics on those budgets, plus the inflationary impact. There are increases to things like highways and transportation, but again, that's slightly misleading, because the most of that increase is actually on special education needs, transport and disability, transport pressures. So again, relates back to social care pressures rather than kind of anything around kind of highways and, and road maintenance. The, the, the other departmental budgets are actually pretty static. So you can kind of see that the, what's, what's using up the county council's resources is, is, is social care expenditure. Similar to the revenue budget, we've got extreme pressure on the capital project. The, the capital programme is very large, a bit over half a billion pounds over, over four years. And if you look on the, the right-hand side, kind of shows where the capital expenditure is going to be spent into the broad spending blocks, and the left-hand side is where the funding comes from. So if I, if I kick, kick off with the expenditure side. So the key pressure on the county council's budget is really around population and housing growth. And I think, again, most people on this call will be familiar with the fact that within Leicester and Leicestershire, we're looking at over 90,000 new homes being built over the next kind of 15 to 20 years. That has a massive impact in terms of pressures on, on school places. And you can see a bit over 100 million pounds being spent on additional school places over the next four years. And the other key pressure is really on highways infrastructure. And you see that kind of big figure in terms of a block on the top left-hand, top left-hand corner. Again, some big highway schemes in there. Mount and Mowbray Distributor Road being, being the biggest, again, big, big kind of pressures around, around there. The, the rest of the capital programme is kind of, again, a lot smaller. That accounts for probably, probably getting on to two-thirds of the capital programme. In, in terms of the funding, a lot of that is funded by kind of specific grants. You can see kind of, again, on the left-hand side, a big element that comes from in specific grants from, from central government predominantly. The, the, the other kind of funding issue worth pointing out is the, is that block with a bit of 100 million pounds to 129 million pounds in terms of funding from other sources. That's principally going to come from borrowing. So we'll be looking to reduce that over, over the kind of next kind of few years. Hopefully, if you get bits of underspend, we'll try and reduce that. But that's going to be a huge pressure on the budget in terms of the need to borrow. Again, we'll seek to internally borrow, but I dare say we're going to have to do some external borrowing from the market. Again, which will, within turn, bring its own kind of pressure on the, on the revenue budget. Move to the next slide. So in terms of, we listed like a few kind of frequently asked questions. The first one is kind of, will the government step in to help us? Well, I think the answer to that is no. And to be honest, I don't think we particularly want them to step in, because if they're stepping in, it means we're, we're failing. So the, the key focus for us is to make sure that we can keep a balanced budget. The government is very much kind of focused on a, on a national level in terms of public finances. The second one is, can we just hunker down until this passes, kind of use reserves? Well, we, we know from kind of experience of other authorities, if you do that, you're generally going to get yourself into, into real difficulty. If you use reserves to kind of address savings, you've still got to make those savings. You've just kicked the can down the road for a year or two. And what it generally means is you have to make two or three-year savings all in one go. And given the kind of levels of savings that we're looking at, that just wouldn't be possible. So it's just not a sensible approach. Again, we don't have to look too far away to see what happens when you try that approach. Northamptonshire's kind of spring to mind. And you've also got other local authorities close by, such as Nottingham and Peetton Borough, but they've also got into great difficulty by adopting just that kind of approach. The, the third one is, are we going to go bust? No, we're not, we're not going to go bust. As I said, you can see we've got a balanced budget for 2324. Pressures do increase thereafter, there's no, there's no doubt about it. We've got a plan. I can see that we can get through 2425. It's going to be tough. There's going to be some tough decisions and some tough things we're going to need, need to make. But, but we're not in a position where we're going to be going bust kind of anytime soon. And actually, because we've always taken a decision to kind of address these issues early, I think we're probably in a better position to many other upper-tier authorities, which probably that kind of answers the final question in terms of why we publicise our position. It gets the organisation in a far better position to address the issue if you're kind of public with it and you're honest with yourself in terms of the scale of the issues that we're, we're facing. But I'm, I'm not going to go through all these uncertainties. There's, there's a huge amount of uncertainty, uncertainty out there. I'll just mention a few of them. We haven't got all our specific kind of grant allocations. Public health is one that springs to mind, but we haven't got all of them through yet. Again, could be good news, could be some bad news in that. We'll have to wait, wait and see. Inflation, as I mentioned, is a, is a, is a huge uncertainty. And, and as we're kind of, I think we're more or less kind of in recession at the moment as a country, again, the impact of what that will be, both on service demand and on things like council tax collection, again, some big, some big uncertainties around that. As will be the, the impact in terms of the reduction in living standards that's, that's expected over the next two years. Again, we're not really certain what that will impact, how that will impact on our, our demand for services. So just a big caveat there, uncertainties everywhere. Just on consultation, the consultation actually closes until the 15th of January. But, but as I mentioned, there will be other opportunities, particularly on some of the more contentious and difficult savings, where we'll be doing kind of more detailed consultation over the spring and summer for, for people to have, to have their say. So I'll urge you to kind of respond to the consultation, but as I said, there'd be, there'd be more opportunities to to respond on the more detailed savings over, over the remainder of this, this, this calendar year. I'm going to stop there, and I think it's where we're open to questions and discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. So you can see what our problems are going forward. Obviously, we've got massive uncertainty. Our other main problem really is the growth in the budgets of elderly persons' care and children's care. And all that is underwritten by a manifesto pledge to protect the vulnerable. So that causes us grief. Then, of course, what we nobody expected when we kicked off with this administration was inflation, you know, hitting 10, 11%. So that automatically, not automatically, but it also increases our problems and therefore increases, increases council tax. So we're in between the devil and the deep blue sea. But we'll take any questions you've got. If they're political questions, myself or Deborah will ask them. If they're money questions, Lee or Chris Tambini will answer them. So I say, but good old Jeffrey Kaufman. Welcome, Jeffrey. You're first.
Thank you. Can you, can you hear me?
Yep. I can, I can hear you, but I only see half of you, Jeffrey.
We'll try and put the better half in. And look, ever since I've been around County Hallen before and now, we've been talking about being the lowest funded local authority. And I know you've spent a lot of time, and everybody's spent a lot of time trying to improve matters. Now really has to be the time. And I just wondered what plans you've got once again, to go down and get some levelling up.
Yes, well, thank you for that, Jeffrey. As you say, you've been around a long time, and I've known you a long time as well. We have actually now managed to get a meeting through the Members of Parliament going to see the Chancellor. We have now got a meeting scheduled where we're going to go and actually sit down with the Members of Parliament and with the Chancellor to see if we can, see if we can get anywhere. The problem we've had is the fair funding review and stuff like that. I think the government have probably parked that in the long grass, because they've got so many other problems to deal with. So I think a meeting with a strategy about how we can help us will be useful, and I thank the Members of Parliament for organising it, and we will, we will go down there myself and Deborah and see what we can do. Okay, Mary Dee, I bet that's Mary. Sorry, Jeffrey.
No, no, thank you for the answer, but it's frustrating.
Tell me about it, Jeffrey. I've never had it. I've been leader 10 and a half years, and every year we had to make savings. Mary?
Yes, thank you. Two questions. One regarding the possibility of 250 posts being made, well, deleted permanently. Is there a method of doing that in order to prevent one particular service from having a more direct hit than others? And my second question, you mentioned demands by increased housing build. That also brings in increased council tax, which you haven't referred to. So how does that work out in the equation? Presumably, that's good news, but that must help in some way, as well as causing you headaches.
Indeed, it does, Mary. Can I ask Chris to reply about the strategy about how we do consult on any potential job losses? Chris?
In, in terms of that headline 250, I, I do think most of it will be able to manage through just kind of managing the overall workforce. I don't think they'll be very much in the way of compulsory redundancies. In terms, in terms of kind of where they'll fall, I mean, you just need to look through the list of the savings, and you'll be able to kind of follow where, where the big savings areas are, and where the redundancy would be. But I say, I do think we will be able to manage it kind of in a sensible way. And if you look at the overall size of the budget, the budget is still growing. It's just that it's growing in some areas, it's growing in some areas, it's not so, not, not growing. So we are looking at in terms of how we can have some kind of redeployment policies across the whole authority to make sure we really do limit the amount of impact on staffing.
Yeah, to be honest, Mary, people that work for us type of know where there's likely to be savings, and they also know where there's likely to be growth. So as Chris says, generally speaking, with natural wastage, that's people retiring and stuff, and people being in the trade, if you know what I mean, as officers, the type of move. So there's very few compulsory redundancies. On the demands on housing, obviously, we do get growth.
So, sorry, could I just go back on that? Because you're looking at managing staff and et cetera. I'm looking at it from the services that will be lost to constituents. And my question was, you know, how do you prevent one big hit on one particular service because X number of people have retired in that department? How do you make sure it's across the board in order to try and protect services at some level?
Well, obviously, if, when you, when you have people leave, if you have people leave in certain areas and they need recruit, they need recruiting, we will still be recruiting. So in adult social care and children's social care, Deborah will tell you, we are incredibly short of people in there, in there now. But in the situation we're in, Mary, obviously, some, there will be a diminution in services in some areas going forward. If we haven't got the money to provide them all, ultimately, there will be a diminution in services. But I'll let Deborah just comment on the, on the children's question in particular, because that is exceptionally difficult. Deborah?
Yeah, I, I think, Mary, just to really sort of overcover your questions, it's really about how we're changing, how we deliver services. So we're making efficiency savings. So we're delivering the same service, but in a different way. So that's where you'll see naturally staff go down in, or in, go up. But specifically in children and adults, we are recruiting for social workers constantly because we can't get them. So there's still a lot of recruitment happening at the county council. But as we look at how we deliver the services within the budget envelope we've got, there will be some natural wastage where people will move departments, people will retire, people will take voluntary redundancies. So I don't think we'll be laying off, you know, loads of people, but there will be still recruiting people as we go. But I'll just let Chris come in and just answer your question about the, the council tax. And obviously, as we build more houses, we get more council tax. So I'll just let Chris answer that final question for you. Thank you.
It is, is a good point, because you're right. As, as, how they go up, we get, we get more in council tax. The, the issue that we have is, is generally you need to build the road before, before the houses are built. And you, you kind of need to be, build the school before it's kind of fully occupied. So you have, you have, you have a, definitely, you've got, you've got a cash flow kind of issue there. And generally, council tax doesn't pay for capital. So council tax will pay for those ongoing service demands that we've got. We're going to pay for those upfront capital costs, hence why we've got a particular problem around the capital programme.
Excuse me. Okay, okay. Thank you for that, Chris. So the next person we've got is Ray. Good morning, Ray.
Hi, Nick. Thank you. 102 million pounds allocated to the provision of schools, et cetera. Can we not swing some of that on to the developers of these individual housing developments? It seems an awful lot of money, and even if we only got a percentage back, it's got to be worth investigating. Seems an awful lot of money and even if we only got a percentage back, it's got to be worth investigating. Or maybe there's, I'm being a bit simplistic. Over to you, please.
You're not very simplistic, Ray. What we expect developers to know is where they're putting in houses that require school, they have to pay for it in its entirety. I think that's correct, isn't it, Deborah?
I'll let Chris come in, but yes, most of it is from developer, but some of it is from DFE grants as well.
Over the, over the last kind of decade, as I say, we've been, we've kind of more or less made sure that schools are funded by a combination of developer contributions or central government grant. So we haven't, we haven't really kind of dipped into, I suppose, county council resources to fund schools. So we we do really try and maximise developer contributions. Having said that, you can kind of see, we still get reasonably sized grants from central government because that can't fully pay for the all the demands around kind of education. But yeah, it is generally developer contributions and central government grant.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the answer. Yeah, can you just, it's still a hundred and two million, just seems an awful lot of money if it's going, by and large, being covered by developer contributions. Is there no way we can get that reduced? Here's my question, where is a hundred and two million going at this point?
I think a lot of it is inflation costs. If you look at the, what we were budgeting for 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 schools, it's gone way up because of the construction costs. So we have to provide the school places, we have to, you know, give the schools, they have to be energy efficient and all those sort of things, which obviously costs a lot more money now than they used to. But um, we do get most of that from the, and you'll be surprised at how many houses across the county get high money in for schools and that all goes towards providing those additional school places.
Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, that, I mean, that that's correct. And on top, on top of just the school places, there is, there is the kind of the the condition work as well. So there's a lot of maintenance as well. I think in total, there's about three hundred odd school within Leicestershire. So it's, although it sounds like a lot of money, that is over a four year period. And I said, there are an awful lot of schools and an awful lot of demands on that budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Cheers, Ray. I've got a, it just says councillor L and no face, you're next. And then you're after councillor L, it's you, Andy. Councillor L, oh, there you are.
Oh, yes, you're an emissary, you're an emissary, Nick.
Good afternoon, John, hope you're.
Good afternoon, Nicholas. Um, district councils hold an awful lot of, um, one oh six monies that are not being spent, whether it's on doctors' surgeries, whether it's on new schools because of the mismatch in the current system. That money is just simply not spent. And indeed, if the money is not spent within an X period of time, as you're aware, as a, as a district finance man, Nick, is it has to be sent back to the developer with interest and the work doesn't get done. And then it's placing a burden, particularly on county council with its, with its services and having to find school places and et cetera, et cetera, which adds to the cost. Don't you think, Nick, that it's about time that we as councillors, whatever perishing party we are, started putting pressure on Westminster to start reforming the system is that when one oh six monies are, are given, dictated to and signed by the developer, um, that we put pressure on them to actually carry out the work, whether it's a GP practice that doesn't, um, doesn't make a private decisions, a private practice not to develop the land that was required by the NHS in the first place. There is a whole match mismatch in the system, which is adding burden on Leicestershire County Council services, but the money is there, but it's not being spent. I I I really take, take Ray Morris's point on where can we get this money from? Let's look at the one oh sixes, Nick.
Can I just take that first, Nick, before you come in, just to highlight some of the work we've done? Because I'm Chair of the Police and Crime Panel, we've just done a huge piece of work that looks at section one oh six funding that's sitting in all across Leicestershire, in all the districts' bank accounts about, there was, I think it, off the top of my head, was seventeen million pounds worth of section one oh six that was sitting in district bank accounts for police. So if you care to look, I can either get the link sent out to you or you can just have a look. It's the Police and Crime Panel, we've just done a working party of section one oh six. And we're starting to unlock that money that's sitting in district bank accounts. But I agree with you, if we had one section one oh six agreements across the whole of the county that were all the same, rather than seven different ones for for all the different districts, about their criteria, about how police or the NHS get that money out, it would make life a lot simpler and a lot of that money would be unlocked that's sitting in districts' bank accounts. Because we don't have hardly anything sitting in our bank accounts. But when you start looking at the districts, they have huge amounts of section one oh six. It's incredibly difficult for the police, for the NHS, for all those other partners to get that money out of the district's bank account. So I'm fully with you, there's huge pockets of money sitting there that needs to be spent within local communities. And we really need to start looking locally about how we unlock that money. So the police is being unlocked, I know the NHS are really interested in the report we've done. So I'd urge you to go and read that and start sort of thinking how we can work across the whole of the county and all the districts to get that money spent in local communities where it's a real benefit and where that money should be spent for all that development that residents have taken.
Anything, so can I just ask Chris Tambini what we do about the district sitting, holding money? John, do we do anything, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do have a team that seeks to co- coordinate the whole section one oh six process. So so, yeah, but I mean, I don't know the detail because obviously some of it's for 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 district services and some of it will be for county services. So I dare say there's a certain amount that's kind of held for those other public services as well, but I don't, I don't know the detail of it, Nick.
We certainly agree with you, John, it's a very disjointed system and not in the best interests of the electorate. But we are where we are, whether it's, I'm afraid.
Finally, Nick, then, wouldn't the unitary authority be better and be able to coordinate all this stuff in a more positive way? I'll leave it at that, chair.
I I think, John, I'd be advised not to comment on unitary authority. Bearing in mind that I'm a district councillor as well and we've got district council elections coming up in May. And I've commented on unitary authorities before and it's not gone down particularly well amongst district council colleagues. So I'm not going to make any comment. Can I go to Andy next, please?
Thank you, Nick. Um, one observation on the balance between capex and revenue. Now, this might be rather naive, but but in the business sense, you deploy capex to try and improve and upgrade those areas of business that cause you the greatest problem. And yet, it it's clear from the pie charts that Chris showed us that our biggest headache, if I call it that, is social care. And yet, the amount of capex that's being deployed towards social care, I quickly read as five million, which was, which was seemed trivial in relation to some of the other areas of investment through through capital programmes. That's the first observation. Is there anything that we can do with capex locally within within Leicestershire in order to improve efficiency and service delivery within social care? Um, my second observation builds on Mary's comment. We understand why any employment organisation uses natural wastage as a means of managing workforce reduction. But the downside is it's unplanned and random. If you have post freezes, you don't know where you're going to lose people and you'll also lose the best people first. Um, and therefore, natural wastage, whilst I understand that it won't upset the trade unions to the same extent, it will probably cause as many headaches as it solves. I'll leave it there, thank you, Nick.
So sorry, my camera's playing. Oh, it's because my battery, my battery's gone really low. Chris, can you explain to, well, explain to Andy how much money historically we've spent on adults and children's social care?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's actually, it's a really interesting point, actually, that capex. Because you, because you are right, our, our issues around are around social care. The 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 issue with social care, particularly around kind of adults, and actually to a large extent, children's, is 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 a lot of it is outsourced. So a lot of the 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 capital is actually kind of private capital, the kind of private sector, kind of nursing homes or adult social care homes. So we don't really have that demand around capital that we do have on, say, schools where we where we own the asset. Having said that, there there is, one of the areas where we've, which we are actively exploring, looking at savings, is around the better use of IT and technology around social care. So there is a certain amount of investment that we're putting into that to try and make revenue savings in terms of kind of how we go about kind of providing social care. So that the, I suppose, in short, I mean, the the big demand around capital is 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 kind of, is that is kind of outsourced. Hence why we haven't got that big, that big issue. But but we are looking at investment, I could say, around kind of IT. If I could have a go at the the workforce one as well, if that's okay. I I probably wasn't that clear, to be honest. I think the 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 the, 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 the natural wastage is kind of part of the solution. So it it isn't the solution. So we will be looking at redeployment. But but overall, it's not that big an issue, just because even you look at those overall figures, our our budget is growing. It is growing, although we need to make savings, the budget is growing. So hence why I don't think the issue around workforce is too big an issue. But I do take your point that you wouldn't just do it through through natural wastage because you'd you'd come to some bizarre kind of outcome at the end of the day. But it's part of a package of various things we'll be looking at. But I don't think particularly it's not a big issue for the county council.
I would just, I would just end up with a lot of accountants and no social workers, Chris.
Nothing wrong with that.
I recognise the 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 repeated mantra that we are increasing the size of budgets, but the the budgets are not increasing at the same rate as general inflation. And therefore, um, we may be increasing the financial value under a particular budget header, but the costs within that budget header have far outstripped any increases that we that we that we may have built in.
Very good point, Andy, and absolutely correct. That's the problem we're facing. Because even if, you know, with inflation at ten percent plus the increase in demand, we're we're always playing catch up. We we just cannot get there with that level of funding. That's why the group are having to consider some pretty serious and politically sensitive, Andy, if I'm honest, savings to be made. But we've always prided ourselves as administration on protecting the vulnerable, which we'll continue to do, and run a tight ship. And if we have to make tough decisions, we will make them, we will never, ever be a Northampton. But thank you for your comments, Andy. Okay, I've got councillor M, I'm sorry, I can't see your name again because it's just a red, yellow box.
To be back with you once more.
Councillor M. Can you see the councillor M, Deborah, on your big screen?
I can't see anyone stand up.
Ah, there you go, Kirsty, good morning, or is it Christie?
No, it's, it's me, I was just coming on to say, I've got no other hands raised, Leader.
Okay. Okay, well, if we haven't got any others, um, please respond to the consultation. Oh, Mary Drake, Mary D's back, Mary? Mic's off, Mary.
Not used to teams. Um, there's this system in the county regarding disabled adaptations where districts refer, sorry, where people have to first go to Labour Council, who's the centre. They decide whether the county does major adaptations, district do minor adaptations. And it goes round and round and round, right? And I have a lady who's been in hospital twice and all she wants is a handrail, right? So even the basics aren't being done. So is it possible to relook at that particular system to see whether it's actually working? I think it's called light bulb, whether it's actually working effectively as it could do.
Mary, I'll I'll answer that for you. There is, it is called the light bulb system, you are right, but Charmwood sit out of the main body, they administrate it themselves rather than through the Labour one. So Charmwood actually aren't joined with the other districts, so it's more of a Charmwood issue than a county issue.
Uh, could you check that, please? Because I believe that's not the case, but if you could check it out for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Well, as I was, as I was about to summarise, thank you for attending. It's been good to speak with you and don't forget we've got the consultation which is out there. Uh, please, please try and reply to the consultation because we do take notice of it. So we've, we were scheduled for an hour and a bit, it looks like we're done in forty five, so you've all got a spare, spare half hour. So thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Bye bye.